It's too small, the screen, I can't see it.
Ready for the ball to drop now.
After that, that was the ball.
Your life.
No Pam. All right. I'd like to call this me the Newton Falls City Council to order. If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing.
I would like to give this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I just, while we're all standing, would I take a moment to introduce two of the, maybe the newest residents of Newton Falls, Dr. Dwayne Smith and his wife Linda. They are the new pastors at the United Methodist Church. So, welcome to the community. Doctor, pastor, however you want to be addressed.
Pastor. Please. Thank you. Most wonderful and glorious fathers, always giving you the honor, praise, and glory. Lord, we just thank you for this assembly. We thank you for Newton Falls, and, Lord, we just pray that you rain your blessings down upon them, on the community, and that you guide this meeting, and that you give the elective leaders the wisdom that only comes from you. Let them know that, you know, ultimately, they work for you. We just ask your blessing in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. This is the regular meeting of the Newton Falls City Council. Today is Monday, August 5th, 2019. Please turn your cellphones off or to vibrate. I should do that myself. Unless pre-arranged, the public comment sections are three minutes. We use a timer. When the timer goes off, we ask you to conclude your statements. The comment sections are not a question and answer period, and the final comment, public comments, are on any subject you'd like, and we ask you to be quiet if you can, so that everybody can hear what's going on. Please take roll.
Mr. Sivette?
Here.
Mr. Beer?
Here.
Mr. Alberini?
Here.
Mr. Stempert?
Here.
Mr. Beer. Uh, Mr. Bariak.
Do you want to move those up now?
Huh?
Move those up now. With council's permission, I'd like to take items under New Business 4 and 5, and move those up to this point now, so that we could do those appreciations, and if they want to leave, they can do so.
I make a motion we do so.
Second?
Sir.
Discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Beer? Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stempert?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Sivette?
Yes.
Ms. Kendall?
Yes.
Would you come to the podium, please? Ms. Kendall is the president now of the Newton Falls 4th of July Committee, and all the helpers are back there behind them, and, uh, do you want to introduce anybody?
I would be delighted to. We have Megan Kendall, Danielle Stokes.
Ms. Kendall, if you could have them come out to the platform, and that way, the cameras will be able to not have a blind picture of the wall, they'll be able to see them. Step up to the desk. All the people in blue shirts step up to the desk.
Well, you guys can introduce yourselves.
There's two groups.
Sorry, the July 4th Committee.
Yes.
Hi, Megan Kendall.
John Gordon.
Danielle Stokes.
Emily and Luke Splezer.
Pam Morick.
And the Motorcycle Society.
Would you like the Bike Show Committee as well?
Rodney Simmons.
Robert O'Malley.
John Cummings.
Mary Cummings.
Stephanie Simmons.
Cody Simmons.
Annette Carpenter.
These are the people that make the Car Show, Bike Show go, the Chili Cook-Off, the, that's it, yeah, the 4th of July, the 4th of July Parade, yeah, gee, we just forgot the fireworks, all that stuff, yes. You know, it's, it's great there, so, please step back up to there, and, this is a resolution of appreciation to the volunteers, individuals, employees, and citizens involved with the 4th of July Committee. Whereas for the years, the city of Newton Falls and surrounding communities have enjoyed many events in conjunction with the 4th of July holiday. The events and activities would not be possible without the dedication of many volunteers.
Mr. Mayor, I want to interrupt you just for a minute. I'm going to ask, back in the video room, while you're reading that, they've got some video that they can run behind your words, and so, Tom, if you're back there, or Ms. Salvatore, if you can start running that while the mayor's speaking, we'll bring to life a little bit of the fine words that you're speaking, you're on it.
I'm sorry. That's all right. I can wait for a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
There we go. All right, the annual Car Show, annual Motorcycle Show, 4th of July Parade, the annual Carnival and Fireworks display, only a few of the special events that these volunteers make possible during the 4th of July celebration. Whereas, once again, the 4th of July festivities committee showed the citizens of Newton Falls and the surrounding communities what cooperation, hard work, and commitment can be accomplished with this 4th of July festivities. Whereas, the City, Newton Falls City Council wishes to show their appreciation to those volunteers, individuals, groups, and organizations who put in a tremendous number of hours and effort to these events, not only for the 4th of July, but throughout the entire year, so we can celebrate and enjoy 4th of July. The Council for the City of Newton Falls, State of Ohio hereby resolves Section 1. Newton Falls City Council with this resolution recognizes all volunteers, committees, individuals, and organizations who helped make this 4th of July holiday special within the city of Newton Falls. Without the effort and dedication of those volunteers, none of the special events around the 4th of July would be possible. Section 2, special thanks and recognition are hereby given to the 4th of July festivities committee, Car Show Committee, Motorcycle Show Committee, Newton Falls Lions Club, Newton Falls Police Department, Reserve Officers, Auxiliary Officers, Newton Falls Street Department Maintenance, Newton Falls Electric Department, and all of the departments who put in time into these events, all groups, organizations, and individuals who volunteered time and personal sacrifices associated with the festivities, so that the citizens of Newton Falls and surrounding areas could enjoy and celebrate the 4th of July. Is there a motion to accept this resolution? Second? Discussion? No, I want to say thanks.
Thank you.
I know how much time goes into it, how much work and effort. It's, uh, it's pretty much a year-round obligation. Some of you have been there more than a couple of years. Pam. How many years?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine years doing the same thing. We certainly appreciate that. Anyone else?
I'd just like to say thank you to you and your committee, as well as the Bike Show and Car Show. I mean, you guys did wonderful. It speaks volumes for our community when you come out and support us, and you put on these events. It just makes us, our town beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll, please.
I'd like to be here. I got the opportunity to learn about, talk with, communicate, interface with, and get to know some members of the July 4th Committee, and, but I didn't really get to know you until I got to see you in action. And what you did, the way you dedicated yourselves, I don't remember, it was the first or second night, and all the rains came, and I figured you'd all abandon your tent to go sit in your cars or something like that. But no, that's not what happened. There, you were all there, maintaining your position in case for somebody wanted to buy one beer during the rain, somebody was going to be there to sell them the beer, and, of course, what all the folks did with the Bike Show and the Car Show, I'm going to come to this community. And what a welcoming, ingratiating, thrilling opportunity it's been to work with you, and mayor, members of city council. You have something very special here, and I hope that we can continue to cultivate that over the years. Congratulations.
I hope so. Thank you.
Anything else? Roll, please.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stempert?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Sivette?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes. Would you move over there, Mr. Bariak? Members of council, if you want to join us?
We'll take a picture. Get your picture taken.
I'll get all the stuff here. Grab them all up here.
Oh, yeah. Heck, yeah.
Come on. Guys, we're going to do multiple rows. Some of you fall down.
We got everybody? Hey, I get to give, you're the, I'm sure here. Thanks very much.
Congratulations.
All right, do we have any baseball, softball video we want to run now, or anything?
Lots of baseball people, though.
Yeah, but I know, we got, don't we have something in the background?
Well, actually, the, on the second run of this program, we can probably insert it.
Okay. Come on up there, young man. All of them. Introduce your group there.
I'm John Rusko from the NFI BSL Baseball League. I got Brent Powell, Greg Moser, Denny Vallow, and Justin Davis.
Can you have those stand at the podium with you?
Yep. Come on up, guys.
It's like the price was right. Come on down.
Behind door number two.
Brent, Greg, Denny, and Justin.
All right. Nice crowd into the podium, so you're all in the camera shot, if you would. Crowd in.
All right, this is a resolution of appreciation to the Newton Falls Youth Baseball Softball League. Whereas, the Newton Falls Youth Baseball Softball League, over the past few years, has organized and worked diligently to make improvements to the baseball and softball fields at the Newton Falls City Park, with funding provided from both the league and from the city of Newton Falls. Whereas, the improvement consisted of replacing the fencing, backstops, fence guards, adding grindings to the outside areas of the fence, where the dugouts graded, and reworked the infield. Whereas, in addition to the work done at the park, the Newton Falls Youth Baseball Softball League held a community day on June 1st, 2019, with games on all the field and food vendors for everyone to enjoy. And whereas, as a fundraiser for the league, they sold and painted tiger paws on driveways throughout the town to show tiger pride. Whereas, the baseball league held its first annual Bags, Brew, and Barbecue Cornhole Tournament event on the September 1st, 2019, at the park. And whereas, the organization and their efforts show what cooperation, working together, commitment, and positive attitudes can do for our community. And whereas, Newton Falls City Council would like to acknowledge and commend the Newton Falls Youth Baseball Softball League board, and the volunteers who coordinated and worked with the contractor and the city employees to complete these projects, and help make the city park appearance and fields an area to be proud of. So, the Council for the City of Newton Falls, State of Ohio hereby resolve, Section 1. The Newton Falls City Council with this resolution wishes to show their appreciation and recognizes the Newton Falls Youth Baseball Softball League, and all the volunteers associated with the league who helped make the city park something to be proud of. Is there a motion to accept this resolution? Second? Discussion?
I just want to thank the youth softball, the baseball and softball leagues for all they do as a park and recreation professional, and I see the hard work, and, you know, what that's going to do for the kids. Thank you.
I also wanted to step up and say thank you, guys, for beautifying. I mean, those fences were well overdo, and you guys did a phenomenal job.
And, uh, what I'd like to say is that the park down there is our crown jewel, and we're going to bring them all back. And I want to thank every, all you guys for the hard work, a lot of hard work. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Mr. Rusko, first, was it back in December, you first came to see me, John, and I said, "Well, how much money do you need?" He said, "Many tens of thousands of dollars." I said, "Well, if the city council approves this money for baseball, how are you to find the labor, so we can get all of it done in such a way that the majority of the money goes into the capital expenditure?" And you said, "Don't worry, we'll get the people there." And, like ants, assembling an anthill, you flooded the park with people such as the gentleman that are wearing these black and orange golf shirts here, and transformed the park from an old, aging edifice to something that we can be proud of, along with any other community in the state of Ohio. And you know, mayor and council, they're not even done yet. Congratulations. Nice job.
Thank you. Thank you.
You need to be near your microphone, Mr. Alberini, if you're going to say something.
Speak up over there.
Should I hold it, or is this? That's sufficient. You sure? Yeah. I don't want to get you in trouble. Don't tell you. You go back to your, your mic, you'll be good. Can't move the mic, sorry.
All right. Well, I just want to say, both committees, you know, we've talked about amongst ourselves here, the branding of Newton Falls, and we hear that, we hear that word in society, "brand", you got to promote your brand, you got to do this, you got to do that. And I couldn't, I couldn't think of no better way than you took both you committees promoting the brand of Newton Falls. And, you know what, the recognition we give you is just a small token, that you really deserve a lot more for what you've done for the community, so thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say, you know, having been chairman of Park and Recs for a few years, and now you've also been an officer in the, in the Baseball Softball League, and I look out in the audience, and I see others who have also been there and done that, we know how much work it takes. And you guys have done a great job this year. I mean, it's, uh, you've done a really good job. I'd like to see it continue, and I think it will, I think the effort's there, and appreciate what you do, it doesn't go unnoticed.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Stempert?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Sivette?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stempert?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
As we move over there, council?
I know. Mr. Vallow just said I was his first coach at Eastwood Sharp Shop.
Good job, guys.
Look how he turned out. Great. All right, there you go.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I gave you a paper, it was on your desk.
All right. Okay, public comments. Anyone wish to make public comments on tonight's agenda?
Katie Carl, 128 West Cory. One of the unsung heroes that was not mentioned in those resolutions that I think needs to be mentioned are all of the businesses and patrons that contribute in all of the events that we hold throughout the city. Our businesses have been stellar, and the patrons that donate and give their products, all of the donations that they give, so those things can happen too. And they really need to be acknowledged and recognized for all of the, everything that they give, and they do, in my opinion. So, okay, um, couple of questions I had about things on tonight's agenda. The, the land that you, the parcels that you have in ordinance 2019-24. I checked on those, and my question is, number one, why is it, okay, this is an assumption, I know you're not allowed to answer me, okay? My assumption would be that you just wanted to add for parking-wise for the city or for future projects, and there's two prices. The one parcel, fifteen-five, or the five thousand four hundred, and the other parcel, eleven thousand, or three thousand eight hundred ninety. If you could address that, when, when you are going to pass this ordinance, what price the city would be paying, the village would be paying for those, the purchase of those, I would be interested, and I'm sure the rest of the city, the village residents would be interested in knowing how much that is actually going to be purchased for, how much of the city funds, and where is the money coming from, what fund? I beg your pardon.
I need to get my, I need to get that. Could I have, could I have the? Let's, let's get to that in a minute. Go ahead.
What fund is this coming from to pay for the properties? I know in the finance director's report, there is a fund that has properties in the bank's funds. Is that where this is coming from, or is that specifically, okay?
Yes.
You're not allowed to answer me. Okay. Um, and the Code Red, and the Code Red system, the last few storms we've had, has not worked. It has not alerted. On TV, there's been an alert and a notification of a storm warning. I have not gotten the Code Red alerts, okay? And other people have not gotten them either. So, that's a concern that I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, under the mayor's report tonight, since the last meeting, there's, there's just a lot of things we do. One of the interesting things is, um, Eastgate Council of Governments is, they're working on numerous projects, but there's a new one out there that they're working on, it's called Hyperlink. And it's exciting. It's like watching George Jetson movies. But the Hyperlink is a tube, and you put pods in the tubes, and the tubes are in a vacuum, almost a hundred percent vacuum, and you could go from Cleveland to Detroit in twenty-three minutes in this tube. And I forget how many people ride in the pod, and, but they're figuring about a hundred and sixty thousand people a day can go back and forth in these pods. And it's, uh, being built right now in Abu Dhabi, I think is where it's being built, and it's going to be in actual use over there fairly soon, but it's coming to the United States, and Youngstown has gotten to be part of this, and then they included Pittsburgh, and then eventually, there's going to be a run to New York, a run to Baltimore, and a run to Toronto. But it's, it's really exciting to sit down and talk with the people that are involved with this, and they need a kind of a straight line. They were going to use the area along the turnpike, and they found out the turnpike isn't quite as straight as we all think it is. So, I thought it was fairly straight, but evidently, it's not, but it's probably going to be above ground, but it's just great big tubes, and they put the pods in the tubes, and off they go. And it's, it's just exciting to talk about this, and it's been, we've been talking about it now in the last couple of quarterly meetings, but there was a whole presentation at the last meeting there a couple of weeks ago, so that was exciting. The other thing, down in Columbus for the last OEDA meeting, we talked about a lot of different, um, public-private partnerships that we can do within the community, and the city manager, I've been talking about those, and some of the things that we're going to do with the CIC and the CRA and that, they, uh, you know, we've been talking about that, but I think one of the most important things is when we, we talk about the BRE, the, the business retention and expansion, BRE, I've, pretty much, when I first heard BRE, I couldn't remember what it meant. Now, I can't remember to say business retention and expansion. The state of Ohio and a lot of the networking organizations that we have are working to grow the businesses in the areas, in our area and everybody else's area, or attract small business. There's a lot of mom-and-pop business, a lot of small businesses out there in that twenty-five to seventy-five range, and we shouldn't be sitting around waiting for that thousand, or two thousand, or three thousand employee business to show up, but we should put all of our efforts into smaller businesses, and then if one of the larger businesses show up, it's a plus. And that's kind of where a lot of the businesses in, uh, in Ohio are working, is trying to expand the businesses that are there, or attract smaller businesses. And we have a lot of places for small business, uh, it's, that's kind of what we're looking at attracting, is, you know, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred, uh, employees, and that's where we should focus. There's a lot of funding out there for small business. Uh, we used to say that there wasn't, and it was just all for big business, but once you get involved in these programs, there is an opportunity out there, and we've discussed this, and we've been utilizing and talking with our partners and our networks to try to find some funding to help our businesses grow and expand. Uh, one of the businesses in town, in case anybody's watching, is going to be looking for a bookkeeper. Uh, we haven't announced it yet, but I told them that I would mention it, so that people that are in that business can start, you know, kind of watching, or, you know, if they're going to be needing a job. And I, that's kind of one of the things we've done, like when the, uh, the Country Club was looking for staff, you know, we mentioned here that they're looking for different parts, and that's one of the things of a business asks us to do, we try to do that to both the businesses. But I listened to your message on Sunday, and I'm going to do this in a way that I hope will beat your message. Uh, I'm going to change what I did a little bit. But a lot of things we've talked about in the past year, year and a half, is how we present ourselves as a community, as individuals, and how we try to project ourself to business owners. Couple of weeks ago, we had a business, a new business owner coming to Newton Falls. City manager's out of town. So, the assistant city manager, the interim, who did a great job while he was gone, thank you very much, and I met with the business owner, and had lunch with him. And, uh, he is so excited about Newton Falls, it was kind of really neat to sit there and talk with him. He wants to annex into the city, he wants to grow his business, he wants to update equipment. He said he actually feels like he's part of the community already, even though he's not. But, uh, we had a great meeting with this guy, and he's from out of state. So, we're getting ready to leave the business, and we're standing out front, and Mr. Bariak drives by and slams on the brakes of his truck, and yells out the window, "There's a pair to draw to", and start, "Ha, ha, ee, ee", and the business owner goes, "Who was that?" And I says, "If you can't", I said, "It's a councilman", and I said, "I can't believe it, but that's a councilman", and he said, "Wasn't that embarrassing?", and I said, "Yeah, it is embarrassing, that somebody who's elected could actually sit there and do that in the middle of town, and yell out the windows at people. How embarrassing", and that's what a businessman from outside this community picked up when he was here in town. And unfortunately, at this time, Mr. Bariak, I'm going to ask you for your resignation. And I'm just tired of all the games, and so, I'm going to ask you to turn in your resignation.
Oh, I'm not going to resign, mayor.
I didn't think you would, but, I mean.
Oh, please, mayor, let's get off this childishness.
Yeah, it's so childish. It's amazing how embarrassing it is out there, Mr. Bariak. It is. I cleaned it up quite a bit. Thank you, because you saved me some other stuff. Mr. Sivette?
Uh, just, I attended the last Plan Zoni meeting, and we had a piece of legislation on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. And the other legislation that you were working on, we're still working on that, and the CRA, and I'm looking forward to seeing that and, and, and working with that. Mr. Bariak?
Time for reports?
Yeah.
Okay, I have three reports tonight. Uh, first of all, I'll go for Eastgate. Uh, we met, and we, I'll just give the bullet points. I was on the, uh, the drivers, distracted drivers, and there are about ten bullet points. I don't want to go through all of them, but they were, education boils down to education. Uh, we're putting together with distracted driving, impaired driving, and the next meeting I'd determine all of it. Uh, then we had a Park and Recs meeting, and the Park and Recs, uh,
It's amazing how embarrassing it is out there, Mr. Bariac. It is. I cleaned it up quite a bit. Thank you. Because you saved me some other stuff. Mr. Savette?
Uh, just, I attended the last plan zoning meeting and we had a piece of legislation on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. And the other legislation that you were working on, uh, we're still working on that and the CRA, and I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing that and, and, and working with that. Mr. Bariac?
Tampa reports?
Yeah.
Okay, I have three reports tonight. Uh, first of all, I'll go for Eastgate. Uh, we met and we, I'll just give the bullet points. I was on the, uh, the drivers, uh, distracted drivers and there are about ten bullet points. I don't want to go through all of them, but their, uh, education boils down to education. Uh, we're putting together with distracted driving, impaired driving, and the next meeting I'd determine all of it. Uh, then we had a parking wrecks meeting. And the parking wrecks, uh, would like to see, if they're not going to use the tennis courts for what they're used for, they'd like to have them turned into something else. Uh, also, they were a little bit wanting to know if we used up all the budget for this year, if they're, and, uh, I was able to tell them I, we did. So, we won't be able to get the twenty-five percent for the grant, for the playground equipment until next year. Is that, is that true, Mr. Lynch?
Uh, as you know, the Finance Director's on vacation and I'm much to my chagrin, but my understanding is she's still completing that project, but we are anticipating the arrival of new playground equipment. I'm not sure it'll make it here this summer, but it's, it's on its way.
Also, they made a recommendation that the river, the Commerce Park, they'd like to see some, uh, tables, uh, permanent good tables and if maybe a barbecue grill could come down there or something. I didn't want to ask for anything for down there because I have been working on that very hard down there with my men, but not to cost the city a lot of money, but there's so many people using that now, we need to do something about the parking lot to extend it and also the kayaking, uh, make a little bit wider. That's on that report, that's all I'll give. We also had a utility, uh...
Review board?
Review board. One matter was resolved very amicably, but one we need to take a very hard look at. And without the Finance Director being here tonight on that, I'm not going to comment on that. But we're going to have to take a hard look at that. And someone, the mayor had given false information out and got everybody stirred up about forgiving this and forgiving that and, uh, uh, we had to straighten that out. I don't know, we, we did the best we could. Thank you.
I, I will say that, uh, but that's an incorrect statement because the information that I did pass on to a citizen came directly from the Utility Department and we talked about that. So, be careful on the false information, Mr. Bariac, you weren't there, you don't know what happened and you don't know what was said.
Who was holding me, sir?
Again, you weren't there, so.
You don't mind attacking me, I'm honest with you.
Be careful what you say, because it is the truth.
Oh, excuse me, sir.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Stempert?
I have people to back it up.
Mr. Stempert? Yeah, well, that's good, I'm glad to hear.
Sorry, Doc.
I have no committee meetings.
Thank you. Mr. Spears?
Um, the Fire Board meeting, uh, gave me a few things that they wanted me to, uh, bring forward to council. Uh, they would like to get a Code Red representative to come and talk to them because they are interested, but they need to have some more information. And I don't know if you could maybe get ahold of them and see if they, if, if possible, the next meeting, which, okay. And, um, then, uh, we passed the legislation about the, uh, smoke detectors. And I'd just like to say, uh, the smoke detectors are free and we are required to have one in our house in the city. We don't control what happens in the township, but we're trying to get people to put these in and we passed legislation. So, the number to call is eight seven two seven three oh six and the, that will get you in touch with someone at the Fire Board. They have to install it to make sure that it's installed properly and in the proper place. So, it's free, so you can't get much better than that. They're going to come over and, you know, bring you the, uh, smoke detector. I don't know for certain that they, they will install it, but they want to make sure that they, you know, get it put in the proper place. Also, they'd like you, if possible, David, to attend the next Fire Board meeting and, uh...
What's the date of that council?
Uh, okay, I've got that on here, hang on. It's, uh, August twenty-seventh and that's at six o'clock.
I'll be there.
Okay, and then also, uh, I'd like to remind people, we were talking about the open burning ordinance. People in town are allowed to have campfires, allowed to cook hot dogs and so on, but, you know, the thing is, is there are three months out of the year where they, they have a ban on open fires and that's April, May, and October. Um, I think you still can maybe have a small fire for a, uh, cookout, but I'm not certain about that. But the thing is, is, um, they just, you know, people have a tendency to burn things and maybe, you know, if you have a big pile, they don't consider that, that you're cooking out. So, if you're going to burn things, you know, you need to be careful about...
Smoking.
...how big a fire you do.
Yeah.
Okay, and, uh, um, also, um, I'd like, I don't know, it, at this point, we need to get the message out to people that, you know, we've made the legislation that they have to have a smoke detector, but if we could maybe get something on TV, maybe get the lady to come that came from the Red Cross.
We have a newsletter coming out, by the way, later this month and we'll make sure we include an article.
Okay, good idea. Okay, and so that concludes my report from the, uh, Fire Board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that, um, we had, um, our Youngstown Warren, uh, lattes and, Chamber of Commerce lattes and legislation meeting, uh, this past, uh, week at Robbie Lee's. First of all, Robbie Lee did a great job. It was a wonderful setting, had an opportunity. Councilman Stempert was there, the mayor was there, Mr. Lynch was there, Kathy was there. Great job, everybody, great job, team. Um, had a chance to chat with, uh, US Congressman Anthony Gonzalez of Ohio State fame and, uh, US Congressman David Joyce. And both have great economic backgrounds and some of the insight they had shared with us was outstanding. And I always like to glean information from people who come in and visit us, but this is our third, the lattes and legis, excuse, with the missile event, this is our, this is our third lattes and legislation event in the last year and a half in Newton, in the Village of Newton Falls. And I think it's important, it goes along again with branding the community and bringing notification. Look, at the end of the day, we, we need all the help we can get. US Congressman Gonzalez is from Cuyahoga County.
Yes, he is.
A US Congressman David Joyce is from Lake County. And they are two very, very, very influential, uh, members of Congress who really don't represent our community, but they came here to give us some insight in how things work. And, uh, we, we, I think we got some really good news as far as missile defense and how hard, uh, the Ohio delegation is working towards securing, uh, that project for the area. So, all in all, I thought it was a great event. Uh, everything was wonderful and I was real proud of all of us, uh, here in Newton Falls.
And, uh, same thing, I might add that I did forget, we did have, uh, the Mahoney River Corridor Mayor's Association held a meeting a couple of weeks ago with, uh, Sherrod Brown. And, uh, we met with him in Washington DC about a month ago. And he came back to the Valley to meet with us again to talk about things that we, that are very interested in us. And it goes along with what, uh, Councilman Alberini says, "The elected officials in Columbus and Washington DC know that we exist here and, and they like us, thank goodness, and they, they, they come and talk to us and they call us." And, uh, it was, it's nice to sit down and talk with them and have their ear. So, we'll see how the river goes, because that was all about the river. And we did meet with CSX. We had a big meeting, uh, with the CSX people and we met with, uh, the, uh, the people that are involved with the dam. So, there's a lot of things going on for our community. Attorney Francis?
Thank you. Enough to report, no request, that we add to the meeting agenda in the executive session regarding pending, uh, court action. And I'll just take a few minutes, we have enough to vote on.
A few in the meeting?
Yeah. I'm available for any questions, gentlemen.
And then for the other director? Mr. Lynch?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of City Council, ladies and gentlemen. I want to announce this evening that, uh, the legislation that was enacted by this council for the formation of a community improvement corporation is one in which I have made a determination who to use for my appointment to the third seat, and that is Mark Stempert, who's here this evening. And he's agreed to serve on the community improvement corporation and I thank him for that very important task. Uh, secondly, tomorrow, um, is our national night out where we celebrate our police department and all the things they do for us. And we also interact with them so we can learn how we can help them do their jobs. They can't be everywhere all at one time, but we as citizens can, uh, can help them do their jobs by paying attention to what's happening in the community. And tomorrow night's activities, uh, from five until ten PM over at the city park include all kinds of games, educational activities, uh, Chinese auction, and I also stand, there's a Dunk the Cop, uh, event there, so, uh, you know...
Is it the chief?
Participate? I don't know. I don't know if it's going to be the... Does the chief have a speedo? That's what we want to know. In any case, uh, please participate. And to commemorate that, we've been lighting the tower in a beautiful policeman's blue and it will be lit that way tonight as well and tomorrow night. And to our citizens, show your solidarity with law enforcement by putting a blue light in your fixture on your porch. And, uh, we have more of those blue lights here at City Hall, phone number's three three zero eight seven two zero eight zero six, but show your solidarity. You can put the light bulb away until next year, but please participate in that. I received sixteen applications for the position of zoning, uh, zoning enforcement officer for, uh, the city of Newton Falls. I have determined to interview all sixteen candidates and I believe I have two or three more interviews to complete over the next forty-eight hours and shortly after that, I'll be making an announcement, uh, in that regard. On the, uh, lattes and legislators, it was an outstanding event, as Councilman Alberini indicated, and I appreciate everyone's participation in the event from this August body and also from the public. But one of the things that came out of that event and that was highlighted in a recent article in the Herald Tribune was the fact that Councilman Joyce made very clear that the Defense Department has not made a determination as to the location of the missile defense base despite some things you might have heard several weeks ago. And what I might point out to everybody in our audience is that the newly appointed Secretary of Defense of the United States was recently quoted over the weekend as indicating that he feels the best style of missile defense protection is land-based missile defense protection that can only bode well for us. So, uh, those of you that have got your fingers on prayer beads that we get that missile defense base, keep the fingers there. And I think that we have got a great opportunity in front of us. And last but not least, and the mayor came in towards the tail end of the meeting, I appreciate his input, especially based on his experience in management over the years. If you look at the mayor's resume, um, he's always been a manager and was a manager with a very large corporation here in northeast Ohio. And, um, there's a company that I've contracted with called Gardner and they've been doing an efficiency of our operations evaluation for the community. And one of the areas in which I anticipate presenting a proposal to the council eventually for, for consideration, after internally we've considered their reports, is how we can save money for our customers, especially in the water and sewer area. So, don't be surprised, uh, after we finish finding these reports, that some new metering, an automatic metering, there are meters that will provide us with the water reading and the sewer reading remotely without any person having to leave this building. And we can get that information and would even allow us to remotely turn off power, turn on power, turn on water, turn off water, um, through these new technologies. Now, that's exciting all by itself because it saves money and it makes us more efficient. But the other way it saves a lot of money is it means we can also recapture water that's disappearing and isn't being properly metered right now. And, hold on to your hats, the amount of savings, I believe ultimately, will be in the millions of dollars, millions of dollars for our community. That's something to pass on to our, our customers. So, in any case, um, great things are on their way and, uh, I appreciate your kind patience. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
That millions of dollars, that was over a couple of weeks, right? Not...
Well, you, you, you had to go right on my prey.
Because I know exactly what somebody's going to say. Over, we lost a billion dollars.
Yeah, no, not, not all at one time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stempert?
I'm sorry, could we also, I got a question from Mr. Fritz, I, I apologize. Could we actually, when we go back into the executive session, could we also talk about the purchase of this and sales of property, um, regarding the purchase that were just on the agenda tonight?
Well, that's already going to be over with.
I, I know it'll be over with, but I'd still like to talk about it.
Sure.
Is that okay?
A bunch of property.
Thank you.
Anything else for the city manager?
You know, so, you know, when Mr. Ricky Ellison was here with the Regional Chamber of Commerce, I was led to believe that we had been chosen already. Only thing, we didn't have the money. The money had not been allocated like, uh, Congressman Ryan had said.
Yeah, I'd be happy to respond to that. I was at that meeting. Mr. Ellison did not say that we'd already been chosen. He did not say that. What he said was, he thought that some decision-making processes had already happened in Washington, but that no announcement had been made. When that occurred, by the way, uh, he also indicated that nothing's final till it's final, not over till it's over, not over till the fat lady sings. But in addition to that, one of the elements that came out of misinformation that was distributed about Fort Drum in New York by Council, by Congresswoman Stefanik and that, I sent a copy out letter to every single member of City Council. And that letter from one of the Under Secretaries of Defense said, "No, final decision's been made." In fact, that letter, which is only a couple of weeks old, said that further evaluation is being undertaken by the Defense Department. So, Ricky, Ricky Ellison didn't say that, that's number one. Number two, no final decision's been made. Number three, the new Secretary of Defense prefers land-based missile systems. And number four, I think that based on some of this reevaluation that's happening, that Camp Garfield is the most favored position.
I read the article in the paper today and maybe I'm, I might have read that wrong, but they said it, they didn't know if the money would come, would ever come. Is that what, is that was in the Tribune or maybe I read it wrong some...
No, I, I, may I respond to that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I, I, it's not wrong for a newspaper article to say that maybe money is going to be appropriated. However, part of the difficulty is this, the defense budget is massive. It's, it's, it's a huge line item in our, our national budget. And as you can tell from some of the things that the President's been doing, internally, the Commander in Chief, the President of the United States, can always make a reallocation. That's number one. Number two, budgets are subject to amendment. We don't, in our own local budget, we don't know how revenues are going to be coming along, how expenses are going to be coming along, what changes, what unexpected expenses we might have. It's not unusual, uh, through the course of our annual year, our, our calendar year, for us to come forward and ask for an amendment to our appropriation measure three or four or five or six times. As a matter of fact, it's wrong if we don't come back with an amendment because as our Finance Director said, we want the calendar to end exactly to the penny. And of course, in order to do that, we have to go back to the council for re-appropriations. So, the answer to your question is, it's a moving target.
Mr. Lynch, uh, the point I'm trying to make is, I, I, I want the best, but when they take the money away from the machine gun, the, and the, uh, main entrance to the Vienna Air Base, the sixteen million dollars that was appropriated and now they're not getting it, that, that upsets me. You know, that money was appropriated and we didn't get it. The money for the machine gun range out there, they took that back. We, we didn't get that seven point four million or something. That money was appropriated. I wish we could do something with the Regional Chamber or somebody or the, or the people we're having in, or Mr. Joyce Gonzalez or whatever, and try to get that money back first. You know what I mean?
I'd like to respond to that, Captain City Manager Lynch.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. We, we have really worked closely with these folks out there and what, what the public really doesn't understand and may not realize is that every year, I think they're averaging about a twenty million dollar investment into Camp Garfield. I think they've, uh, and, you know, because we're a visual society, we, we look at aesthetics. When you go up and down Route Five, you don't see no activity going on because of the woods and the fence and all that stuff. There is activity going on, trust me, and we are told there is activity going on. There are contractors in there on a daily basis doing work. Today, if you notice, anybody went up Route Five, they had the National Guard, uh, in their training today and Route Five was, was more like four eighty. So, there is activity going on there. I can't answer the airbase, I didn't read the paper today or anything like that, but, uh, our military liaison, Vito Abruzzini, uh, with Youngstown Warren, Chamber of Commerce and Guy Caviello, keep us up to date virtually every week.
I think when you talk about some of this missile defense systems, you know, we have a lot of connections and a lot of people we talk with between the chamber and, and between Washington and that, and we kind of stay informed, there's a lot of information goes back and forth. But I won't get into specifics... But I won't get into specifics, that way I won't get misquoted for something that may not be exact. But, the landscape changes abruptly in Washington, I think everybody knows that. The President wants to pull money out, and the Supreme Court has said it was okay to pull money out of the defense budget for things on the wall, and, you know, people have said whether it goes our, you know, our missile defense. Well, from my understanding is that's not part of that missile defense system, and it may not be part of the machine gun range or anything else. As to the gate at the Vianna Air Base, there's a lot of other things that I'm not gonna go into details on that I've heard in discussions as to why maybe that kind of fell through with at this point in time, but it certainly isn't off the radar screen that they want to do that, but there's some other issues involved with that right now that kind of put the halt on it. I don't think that it's gone, I just think that there's some other issues out there that just, that I'm just not gonna go into. But we do stay in contact with a lot of different people, and we have a lot of conversation. So, Camp Garfield is the most important thing that we're working on, and we work with our elected officials and our regional partners on a weekly basis, and talk with them, and share information, and we're doing everything we can to see that we can get it here. And, you know, we may not, that's the whole point, it may not come, but we're certainly not letting any grass grow under our feet trying to get it here, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Any changes in tonight's agenda? Do you have a motion to accept the July first regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Go, please.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Svet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stenber?
Yes.
We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is ordinance two thousand nineteen dash nineteen, amending Part Nine of the codified ordinances. Anyone wishing to speak for or against?
Katie Carl, one twenty-eight West Quarry. I am gonna ask that you look at this, look into this further, and a couple different things that I'm concerned about. Why should it include street and all the utilities? Expanding the customer base is great, yes, but a plan should be put into place for that, and is there a plan in place for it? Clarified. Authorized expenses should be already in the annual budget, all right? That shouldn't have to be in there. Again, I think this should be tabled. Economic development shouldn't really be in there. The way it's already in our ordinances, yes, it needs to be written better and be better clarified. You're correct, absolutely. But this should not come out of our utilities or Street Department general fund. Taxpayers pay enough already, and should not be further burdened with the verbiage that this ordinance has, in my opinion. But the way that this new ordinance, this ordinance is amended and reads to be added into our ordinances, I think this needs a little bit further twerking, if you will, or tweaking with the verbiage.
Twerking would be very unusual.
Okay, tweaking, okay, tweaking.
She said twerking at first.
Okay, all right, my verbiage is wrong, okay? But it needs a little bit more work, yet, on the verbiage, because it's just too generalized, I believe. And I don't think that our electric should cover all utilities and streets, and that verbiage should be in there for our electric department in this ordinance, and to cover economic development. That's how I'm reading this ordinance as it stands. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Yeah, we got some city...
Name and address, please.
Rodney Simmons.
Address?
I live on Halley County Road in Newton Falls on the township. But what I'd like to address is, you're going the city streets, which need done in the bridge, I have no issue with this, but clear from two twenty-five, all the way up five thirty-four, five thirty-four exit and seventy-six, they completely wiped the Newton Falls sign out like we no longer exist.
We know that.
It is hurting your business.
It's been addressed.
I hope, because it's really killing it. I mean, the new businesses in town are hurting, they're going to lesser hours, some of them are lesser days, and it just started when this happened. I know it's not in your control, the state is under control of that, but we need to get some signs out there. There is, that was a truck, meant for, as a truck route, and I don't think everybody understands that there is still a way to get into this town, and we need to address that quickly, because it's hurting businesses bad. I appreciate your time.
Sorry about that. My fault.
I'd like the city manager to address the...
We'll do that later.
Public hearings.
We're going to public hearings. Anyone else for, our rule is closed. Ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty, requiring residential smoke detectors, anyone for or against?
Katie Carl with twenty-eight West Quarry. This is something that's a good thing. It's not, it's not meant to be a Gestapo-type of thing, it's for safety purposes, for heaven's sake. That's why this ordinance is being passed, for everyone to have smoke detectors, smoke alarms, if you will. And the grant is for, as Mr. Beer said, the grant and the ordinance that you have is for everyone to have smoke detectors. The grant is in coordination with the Newton Falls Detroit Fire District, for them to come out, call them. I'm all for this, I think this is wonderful. It's a wonderful program, yes, by all means. Pass this and move forward with it, and get it, get it moving forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? Our rule is closed. Would the clerk please read ordinance two thousand nineteen dash nineteen for a second reading?
An ordinance amending Part Nine, Streets Utilities, a Public Service Code of the Newton Falls Codified Ordinances.
Is there a motion to accept ordinance two thousand nineteen dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to have the city manager weigh in on this again.
Sure. We don't have an ordinance describing potential areas as relates to where expenditures can take place, but you control the budgetary string, so when Ms. Carl talks about the idea that, well, I don't think something should be used for this, I don't think anything should be used for that, we go back to the members of city council for approval of our budgetary expenditures. So, unfortunately, if our auditors looked at our books right now, at our ordinance books, they would see our ordinance books don't identify anything. And we're in the process of going through an audit right now, and I want this cleaned up, because as you know, the audit we had from the previous year had some minor citations saying clean up things. Well, we have a new audit firm doing the audit this year, and I want us to have a pristine audit, so I urge your passage tonight.
Any other questions?
I understand that, I'm glad you brought that up, because without letting any, getting into it too deep, we were cited.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch, for explaining that.
Anyone else? Go, please.
Mr. Svet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stenber?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Would the clerk please read ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty?
An ordinance amending the Newton Falls Codified Ordinances, Part Fifteen, Fire Prevention Code, to include smoke detectors required in residential dwellings.
Is there a motion to accept ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to make, Mr. Chairman, if I could, thank you. Members of council, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, there's a number that wasn't mentioned during all this discussion about the smoke detectors. Since the fire chief announced this program, after the tragedy that we had with the young lady that was stuck up on the second floor during that fire, we've already installed, and it does include installation, Councilman Beer, three hundred smoke detectors.
That's good.
What's that been, four weeks? Three hundred smoke detectors, and we have an unlimited supply. Folks, I've made the same speech about code red, lives depend on this, so please, take advantage of the information that Councilman Beer presented this evening. I know the fire chief was intending to be here tonight to talk about this, and another issue related to that Ballantyne property, but the point is that there are matters in which what we do here at these tables don't amount to very much when somebody's life is on the line, so please take advantage of our smoke detector program.
I would like to second address. One second, yeah, go ahead and give that number again.
Okay, I'd just like to tell everybody one more time, the number to call to get in touch with the fire department to get your free smoke detector is eight seven two seven three zero six. So, give them a call and get them scheduled to come out.
I had a call from a constituent, and if I'm wrong, they told me that they have a ten-year battery in them. I wasn't, is that...
Actually, I think it's at least ten years, and I'm trying to remember what the fire chief had indicated to us, but I believe these are self-contained batteries, in other words, they're non-tamperable. So, it's, I'll tell you what, whatever smoke detector you might have in your house right now, that's great, check it out, but these smoke detectors are probably much better.
They were very, very happy with the service, they put them in in a couple of minutes, boom, 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 and they were gone, and the battery life, they were very impressed with the battery life.
We guarantee the labor.
Anyone else? Go, please.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Stenber?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Svet?
Yes.
Would the clerk please read ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-three?
An ordinance rezoning lots within the city of Newton Falls to correspond with the city of Newton Falls Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map.
Is there a motion to accept ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-three?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I wanna say...
Mr. Svet?
Yeah. So, the future land use map, or the, sorry, the zoning map that you guys will be approving tonight, at least in the first reading, is going on for two years at planning and zoning, so there has been a lot of discussion, and this alleviates some issues that we were having with while I was on planning and zoning, of people that had residential houses on commercial properties that had to come to us for variances in upwards of three, four hundred dollars. So, we are actually, I'll be pleased once this gets approved, that we can alleviate some of that cost from our citizens within Newton Falls. And I'd like to make a motion to amend this ordinance on the lots on the east side of North Canal, from North Street to Main Street back to Commercial. There is a small area that we found within the map that we want to change things back to Commercial.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend this ordinance to change the zoning back to Commercial from residential, from North Street to Main Street?
On Canal.
On Canal.
On the east side of Canal, from North Street to Main Street.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion?
I'm gonna recuse myself.
Any other discussion? Go, please.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stenber?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
I'm gonna recuse myself.
Mr. Svet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Okay, continued discussion on the ordinance with the amendment.
Zach, the zoning map that you're coming out with, is that a color-coded map showing that it's zoned Commercial, R one, R two, whatever? Okay.
Gotcha. I think that's, I used one at Warren Township in the eighties, and it was a huge, huge, huge map.
Yes.
To how big it is, kind of really big.
Yeah, and city will be getting one of those.
Gotcha, awesome.
We got everything.
You gotta say, you know, thanks to the work you guys did when you were there, and for those on the Planning and Zoning Commission, we've done this in the past, two or three different times. There's a lot of work, a lot of time involved, and sometimes a little bit of pain when plans get changed and somebody doesn't want them changed, but sometimes it's necessary to clean some of the things up that have happened over the years, so my compliments to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the time involved in getting this completed, so. Anyone else? Go, please.
Mr. Stenber?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
I'm gonna recuse myself.
Mr. Svet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Would the clerk please read ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-four?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase property from William Ballantyne.
Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Can we just get a explanation out on the floor?
Would you, would you, please, please?
What an explanation, eh? This, I will tell you that, I became the city manager November fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and as I engaged in my travels around the community, I identified that one of our most precious life-giving and life-saving edifices that we have is our spectacular water tower. And as you know, it's been revamped just a few years ago. It's beautiful, in fact, that's one of the reasons why we decided to light it up with color coding, so that people can see that this is an important part of our landscape. But people should also know that whenever it's threatened, the lives of our citizens are threatened. And as I traveled the community, I noticed that our water tower had adjacent to it a narrow strip of land, and then next to it, an old brown wooden house, which was a tinderbox. So, I've met with the fire chief, and I said, "Chief, is this water tower exposed? If this, something happens to this tinderbox, and for some reason, either the tinderbox should explode or catch on fire, it is so close to the water tower that it serves as an immediate threat to the safety of our citizens." So, I found out who owned this little strip of land, and who owned this old brown wooden house, this vacant building next door to the Chase Bank Building, and I did some negotiating, and Mr. Ballantyne said, "Well, I understand why it's so important, and by the way, urgent, which is why it's an emergency, because I'd like the city to acquire that property, and I want to tear down that house as soon as humanly possible. We're moving into August, and, you know, they say the most dangerous thing you can say about avoiding a disaster is start talking about it, and then that's when maybe something's gonna happen. I want it torn down for the safety and preservation of the safety of this community, and so Mr. Ballantyne said, "Well, I just bought the property about a year and a half ago, the strip and the house, for thirty-seven thousand dollars." He said, "So, I gotta make a profit on the deal." I said, "I'll tell you what, I'll pay forty thousand dollars, but over a period of time." He said, "Well, pay it over five years." I said, "No, we'll pay it over ten years, four thousand dollars a year." Very, very, very minor impact on the budget of the community. He said, "Sold." We shook hands, and the legislation's in front of you tonight. And I urge your passage, because the whole darn thing makes me nervous, and I want it to come down and disappear.
So much to amend, it's not listed as an emergency?
Yeah, it's not listed as an emergency.
Okay, I don't know how that happened. I'd like, can we amend it as an emergency on the floor?
We could amend it, yes.
Okay. Council, if you'd be happy enough to do that, or kind enough to do that, and by the way, that's on me, I thought it was presented in that fashion.
I'd like to amend it to be an emergency.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment?
I would like to say that I back, I've heard from citizens that know that place, the wall's ready to fall down.
This is just on the emergency right now, Mr. Bariak?
Just a minute.
Just a minute.
I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? Go, please.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Svet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stenber?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Would the clerk please read ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-four for a second reading?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase property from William Ballantyne.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to say, you know, the house is very old, but it's not significant. I think if the city buys it and takes it down, we might be able to find a better use for that property also, and it's, you know, not going to ever be anything that, you know, is an asset to the community, so I think it's good to buy it, and we're not spending a lot of money, you know, all at one time. So, really, I think you made a pretty good deal, and I think it's a good thing.
This will follow to the CIC.
Pardon me?
This will follow to the CIC.
It can, but its acquisition can be done through the general fund.
Right.
Yeah.
How big is that problem, again?
You got me on that. It goes, the strip goes all the way along that cement rail.
Right.
Yeah.
How big is that property right there?
You got me on that. It goes, the strip goes all the way along that cement rail.
Right.
And I believe the brown house goes back at least partially, I would say maybe 90% back, the same length as the Chase building. I'm shocked that we haven't had an emergency dealing with that property during the interim period of time, and.
Might be a perfect spot for Marion Donuts.
It's that big. Yeah, one's .039 and one's .1722, so.
50 foot wide.
That's almost two tenths of an acre.
150 deep. It's not bad.
Yeah, you're right, we could do that. Any other discussion? Go ahead, please, on the, yeah, on the second reading.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Sivet?
Yes.
Would the clerk please read Resolution 40-2019?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Woodford Escavating LLC for the 2018 stormwater improvements, Phase A, within the city of Newton Falls.
Is there a motion to accept 40-2019? Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Could you let the public know what this involves? Mr. Lynch?
This improvement project's been the subject of debate over a great period of time, and Councilman Batisti, as you know, was very involved in various elements of this.
And we're not done correcting stormwater issues around our town, and we've been able to get some funding for this, and I'm hoping that the people, Thomas Folken Associates in directing the engineering on this, are going to not only solve this problem, but other stormwater issues. It's hard to think about it now, because we've had a few days of dry weather, but six, seven weeks ago, we couldn't even cut the grass in some of our yards. But these drainage issues, we are going to solve over and over again, and again, this is just Phase A of the project.
Any other discussion? Go ahead, please.
Mr. Alberini? Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Sivet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Need a motion to schedule the first regular meeting in September for Tuesday, September 3rd, due to Labor Day. Second?
Second.
Discussion? Go ahead, please.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Sivet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Need a motion to accept the Finance Department's June monthly report and all the attachments as presented?
Second?
Second. Discussion? Go ahead, please.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Sivet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Stumpert?
Requesting a motion to accept the Police Department's June monthly report and the attachments as presented?
Second?
Second. Discussion? Thank you again, Chief. Go ahead, please.
Mr. Sivet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Of course.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Couple of comments.
I just want to, since it was brought up about Code Red, I just want to make a couple of quick comments because of the importance of it. We're a subscriber to Code Red. I'm not an expert at it by any means. However, if you call OnSolve, which is their parent company, at 866-939-0911, you'll walk anybody through. Everybody's phone is a little different, and if you're a subscriber and you pay the 99 cents a year, it has parameters in it. If you're not a subscriber, it's still totally free. You just go to the website, or our website, the city, or the police department website, and there's a link, and on that link, you have the choice of getting an email, a text, and a phone call, or all three, anytime there's any kind of threatening weather. Now, I want to make it clear, there's, when there's a severe thunderstorm watch or severe weather watch, they do not put that out. This is generated by the National Weather Service. However, warnings do go out, but it has to be within an area around us that's really chosen by OnSolve, by Code Red. Lordstown has used this for years. It works, but I highly recommend, go to the link, absolutely free. The nice part about it, too, is if you go to the link, no matter where you're at, you're going to get the phone call, the text, and the email, or one or whatever. So you could be somewhere in California, and you're going to find out that we have a severe weather warning, whatever it might be. With that said, you can then call a neighbor, call a friend, call an elder that lives on the street, and say, "Hey, listen, you know, I don't know if you're signed up for this, but I just got, I just found out." So that's real important. So as far as even the Fire Department Board Meeting, Mr. Beer, again, I'm far from an expert at this, but I can give the basics, and I'm more than happy to speak on it. But please, everybody, call OnSolve. They have the answer. Everybody's phone is a little different. I couldn't begin to tell you how an iPhone works, because I have an Android. So, and a lot of times, it's just a matter of setting some parameters, the same way as we got a call that somebody lives on 9th Street is having a problem even signing up. But that's just a parameter that OnSolve has to change, and they can get it all set. Smoke detectors, I'm not revealing anything that everybody doesn't know, but with that fire fatality, they did not have smoke detectors in that house. And this is one of the reasons that the Fire Department got on this, and yes, it is a 10-year battery and a sealed system. It's a great smoke detector, and this is the first I heard with the actual number of 300. Fantastic. Keep it up, folks. Thank you.
Chief, would you give the OnSolve number again?
Sure. It's 866-939-0911.
Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
Katie Carl, 128 West Quarry. A reminder for everyone, the walk for SAP Substance Abuse Prevention is September 15th at, the setup is 1:00 p.m. here in City Hall. We'd like everybody to be involved as much as they possibly can. We had a good turnout last year. A lot of businesses were involved, a lot of people were involved, and we're very thankful for that. It is substance abuse prevention. There's a lot of ignorance still around. There's educational resources. The Police Department was involved, the Fire District was involved. We had some things for the kids. There's a lot of, pardon me?
What time is that? 1:00 p.m.?
Setup is 1:00 o'clock. We made it for after church so that everybody could come, and with the covered bridge being closed, probably going to be a real short walk. Any organization is welcome to come and set up a table also, and we welcome any kind of community involvement whatsoever. The purpose is to support everybody. We had the one house come out, and they walked with us, too. The chief sent an officer out and led the walk last year.
Where are you going, your form up?
We form up in the City Hall parking lot, and they walked around to the covered bridge and around back up, okay, Bridge Street. I'm sorry, I couldn't think of the name of the street. So not everybody walks, but, and you don't have to. You can just be there for the community. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Sivet?
Todd Miller.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes. I'd like to take this opportunity, not to go into very deep, very deep, but I'd like to thank all the good citizens of this community and all the neighboring townships who have given me a kind acknowledgement of appreciation for the work that I've done down on the park and my men. I am truly humbled. The enjoyment everyone is having down there is the greatest thanks I can ever get. I would also like to thank, today I was over at the Catholic Church cleaning up some broken limbs for the church, which is my church, and the Methodist Church brought my men over some lunches. I'd like to thank the new doctor, very, very decent of them. They were just, thank you for those lunches, and thank you for the Christian spirit. The other thing I'd like to say about the park, we're not quite done with the park yet. It's a work in progress, but as we go along, we're going to make more and more improvements. And I'd like to thank Mr. Lynch, right now, for, the city's getting involved a little bit right now. He's the boss. The city owns the park. They're being very receptive, and we're going to bring, two kayakers were down there. I don't get Facebook and all that, but two kayakers were down there, and they, their comment was, "We love Newton Falls." Now, we didn't have to pay for that one. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say that on July 20th and 21st, we took a group of volunteers. I'd like to thank those volunteers, especially Justin Davis, for coordinating that event. It's an Everett Great House Memorial Playground. We gave it a facelift, we put in some new mulch, painted the playground equipment, and while we were down there, the kids have basketball hoops, and they would like, they wanted us to paint some lines on the, so we took, we were originally going to only spend one day there. We spent Sunday painting the lines on the court so that these little kids will have a three-point line and a foul shot line and all that, and it was truly moving. And after looking at it, if anybody has a chance to go by, it is a wonderful gem of a park there. I can't say enough about it. We are going to continue to fix the fence from some recycled parts from the fence at the baseball, the city park, but we'll be fixing the fence, and, but it truly was a great event, and I just wanted to thank all the volunteers for coming out and painting, and it was really hot that weekend. Thank you.
Mr. Beer? I'd just like to make a request of Mr. Lynch, that you take a look, you may have already done this, I don't know, but if you would take a look at the street by the library, where, well, that's actually Church Street there, but I don't know why, but the whole road's in pretty good shape. It wasn't paved that long ago, but right there by the library, it's really getting bad.
It is on the schedule. That particular area is on the schedule.
Okay, great.
And as a matter of fact, we've been in touch with the city's contractor, and sometime in the very near future, you know, these contractors, they develop sort of a regional plan where they're going to go from point A to B and C and so forth, but we've prevailed upon them, and so everybody buckle your seat belts. The days of orange cones and orange barrels will become even more prevalent with the great result of smoother roads. And this is, this year is just first year of a five-year plan to restore our roads to their former glory.
Someone was also asking me, when exactly this is all supposed to start, and I didn't have the answer, but I told him, usually it's towards the end of summer or early fall. Do you have a date when the paving will start?
Well, as you know, the 5/34, that will start at the completion of the bridge, and so that road reconstruction is scheduled to start, I guess, in about another 50 days. And the rest of the roads, I actually expect those to happen within the next 21 days. So that's going to be a little bit earlier than usual.
Okay, great. Mr. Alberini?
Mr. Beer, I just want to make a couple of comments. The lighting of the water tower has been outstanding. It's just been, it's been magnificent. The folks over in Ward 1, I've got a lot of inquiries and a lot of suggestions as to keep it red, white, and blue. Red, white, and blue. Red, white, and blue. Plain white's okay, but red, white, and blue's even better. The blue's outstanding, too, but I think something of a color really, really, really stands out, and to see that thing is just magnificent to see. It's just, it's amazing, so.
Attorney Fitz?
I have nothing for.
Mr. Lynch?
Tomorrow is the national night out, as I mentioned before, so please participate. I have nothing further to report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I've also got a lot of comments on the water tower. I was kind of wondering how that was going to go, but a lot of people really like the color, like they like it lit up, and it's very nice.
Mr. Chairman, I might point out, there are a lot of surprises in store for this community as relates to our capacity to be very creative as it relates to the color, but we want it to be special, so, you know, keep your.
I would bet you could probably sell advertising on there.
I think we could get that fullback up there.
Keep your eyes on the skies.
Yeah.
I'd like to say, you know, you guys did a nice job at the park up there.
Very nice.
After the incident up there, and it was renamed, there was a lot of work done up there and was cleaned up, and the signs put up and that, and nothing happened after that. But I cut a lot of grass up there, and I'm up there quite often, and that's probably the second most-used playground in the city. There's always kids out there, and I actually was looking through the budget the other night, and I noticed that there's a line item budget for nets for basketball hoops, and I think those are all missing up there, but I think if you look in the budget.
We just got, donated two.
Oh, okay.
So you put two new ones up.
I think there's a specific line item budget in there for basketball nets.
Oh, wow.
I mean, for netting. That was kind of neat. But anyway, in response to the business owners, I think this council, the people at this table have multiple times in this year and in past years thanked the business owners in this community for their donations, their money, their effort. I think everybody knows that they're swamped. Every organization in the world asks them for something, and our businesses are, they're very receptive to that. And I think that, you know, there's certainly no way that we're going to sit here and mention every single one of them, because we don't want to miss anybody, but I think that it's extremely important to understand that all of us and many others appreciate the donations and the time and the effort of the businesses in our community, and how they support all of the different entities within the city. They do a tremendous job, and I know it's burdensome. I've talked to some of the business owners. I'm not real big on going and asking for donations, whether it was for the Fourth July Committee, or for the motorcycle groups, or whatever. I just, I struggle with that, because I know how many people do it, but I've talked to businesses, and they have little budgets, and they use them, and they try to stretch it during the course of the year, but by all means, our thanks to all the businesses in town, small and large, for what they do for our community and for the groups within the community. So we certainly want to keep that out there and get that out there for them. Anything else? We have a motion to go into executive session for the purchase of said property and pending or imminent court action. Second?
Second.
Discussion? Go ahead, please.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Sivet?
There won't be any decisions made while we're back there, so pretty much it's over. Thank you for coming.
There's law.